All right, how's that?
How's that? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the school committee. Unfortunately, we do not have everybody here today for the regular scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee, December 8th. Ken Fontz is, of course, you know he works for a utility company and he is working an overnight shift tonight. And unfortunately, Rhonda had an accident in just this afternoon.
Rachel.
Rachel had an accident just this afternoon. Those eyes get me messed up.
Mm-hmm.
And she will not be able to be here. However, we do have a quorum, and I'd just like to make a brief statement as to why we're having this meeting tonight, is that there was a little bit of confusion, but we had planned to have this meeting tonight because we need to do a presentation to the school committee for the budget before we have our open meeting on the 19th. And we needed some time to have the committee get the superintendent's budget proposals and to make comments or suggestions or recommendations so that he can go back to the drawing board so that we can have pretty much of a finalized product before the 19th. So it was almost imperative that we have this meeting tonight, given the terrible conditions. We did think with the snow was going to slow down a little bit, but it didn't cooperate. The terrible conditions outside, so I want to thank the school committee for being here and any other members of the community that are here as observers. It is very important that this budget presentation be made tonight so that we can proceed with our joint meeting on the 19th. So that's a brief explanation as to why we're here, and I know under normal circumstances we probably would have canceled the meeting, but unfortunately, there was a little bit of confusion, but the school committee meeting was never canceled. At this particular point in time, anyone want public participation? Seeing none, we'll go on with the agenda. Good news, Dr. Rubenovich?
Yes, thank you. First bit of good news I have is that a donation to the family pantry of Damian's Place and the community nurse and hospice care in the name of Nancy Barry, a teacher, and in behalf of the office staff at Minnet Forest was given. And I thought that was very nice. That was good news. At this time of the year, what we've just gone through with the holidays, actually any time between Thanksgiving and Christmas, the number of people that do random acts of kindness by either buying gifts for families that couldn't afford it and so forth, there are many of them that don't put their name out there, and I think that's good news that we have that many people doing random acts of kindness. That is two pieces of good news, and I guess the other one I will leave until we get to in my report.
Okay. Any other pieces of good news? Okay, I do know, maybe Mr. Palladino could comment on it. I know that there was a DECA competition last week.
Thank you.
Oh, you had something?
Yes, actually. Thank you, thank you.
I knew you were going to wait till the-
Um, yes. On the morning of January 6th, a group of 77 Wareham High School students went to the Hyannis Resort and Conference Center in Hyannis to take part in the DECA competition. A series of four tests to test their knowledge in marketing and management were given. And if they, I believe, were in the top 10 in each of the categories, then they get to compete in Boston in March.
For the state competition?
For the state competition. Students competed in 22 different categories against 13 different schools. Out of 77 people from, people, Wareham took the district competition, 40 people were able to go home with medals around their necks. So 40 out of 77 people won medals at this competition. Only the top eight move on to the statewide competition, the top seven receive plaques, and then the top five move on to the state conference. Wareham had a total of 35 students go home with plaques. Of that 35, 15 placed in the top three. This year, there was a trophy handed out to the top three test scores for the marketing test. Out of over 500 students that took it, Wareham had three students place in the top four spots. Also, Wareham was the only school to have 100 percent of the participants score above the national average in one or more of the written exams. These are remarkable, and as always, are the people that we have to thank on that particular day. We had chaperones Barbara Thomas, Laurie Martinez, Judy Debane, Marjorie Rakowski, teacher advisor Cindy Sylvia, teacher advisor Susan Nobrega, and teacher advisor Brian Nobrega. And I think this is great news. You know, every year they do well, but they keep getting better and better, which is amazing to me.
Yeah, it really is. That's great. Anybody else at this particular time? Poo-dos to the DECA program. All right, moving right along, I'll approve the minutes of December 8th, please. We'll take them one at a time. Does anyone see any corrections, omissions, or deletions? December 8th.
Move approval.
Do I hear a second? There is a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It would be 3-0-0. Next, we have the minutes of December 15th. Are there any mistakes, omissions, deletions, or whatever?
Just one addition. When we had Principal Palladino come and talk about the school improvement goals, we did talk about asking him to come back and present another time based on the comments that we made. And I don't think that we chose a date, but I know that that's not in there, and so I just want to make sure that there is a record that the school committee has requested that Mr. Palladino comes, come back and present any additions to those goals.
Will you make that addition? Is that, will that be difficult, Michelle? Will you make that addition?
Right.
Okay, has that added? So entertain a motion as corrected or as added to.
Move approval as amended.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 3-0-0. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Next on the agenda is a report of the chair. Under report of the chair, I have a statement to read and to submit for the record. This statement is my response to the complaint filed with the Attorney General. Complaint alleges that the Wareham School Committee violated open meeting law. The complaint incites comments made by this chair in response to a question posed during public participation portion of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee on December 8th, 2010. A question was asked relative to continuing regular meetings of the school committee's subcommittee on transportation. In listening to the tape of that meeting, I acknowledge that I did not give the clearest explanation of my position relative to the composition of the transportation subcommittee. I stated that the transportation subcommittee consists of two people, Mr. Fontz and Mr. Swett. I understand that those words led to some confusion. What I meant was that Mr. Fontz and Mr. Swett were the school committee's members I appointed to the transportation subcommittee. As chairman of the Wareham School Committee, I continue to get my information from these two people relative to recommendations of the subcommittee. I appointed Mr. Fontz chairman of the subcommittee and gave him full authority to invite other community members to serve on the subcommittee. The transportation subcommittee held meetings which were posted and open to the public. I always considered the transportation subcommittee as an advisory arm of the Wareham School Committee, and I am confident that all elements of the open meeting law were adhered to. Votes and recommendations of the subcommittee were made in posted, open meetings and were honored and validated by the school committee when reported out to the full school committee by Chairman Fontz. I hope this statement clarifies any confusion or misunderstandings. Respectfully submitted, for the record, Clifford W. Sylvia, Doctor of Education, Chairman, Wareham School Committee, January 12th, 2011. As part of my report, I would like to have Dr. Rubenovich read his letter to the Attorney General's office. Let me sift through this matter.
This is dated January 5th, 2011. Office of the Attorney General Martha Coakley, One Ashburn Place, Boston, Mass. Regarding open meeting law complaint dated December 20th, 2010, the complaint alleges that the school committee violated the open meeting law by permitting allegedly non-members to vote and participate in school transportation subcommittee meeting. The school transportation subcommittee is a duly appointed subcommittee of the school committee. The chairman of the school committee delegated his authority to the chairman of the subcommittee to appoint additional members to the subcommittee. The complaint was also, the complainant was also appointed to serve on the subcommittee. The school transportation subcommittee complied with all of the posting and meeting requirements of the open meeting law. A copy of the postings and the minutes are attached. Some confusion may exist because at a recent school committee meeting, the chairman of the school committee referred to the transportation subcommittee as the two individual school committee members. This statement was an error and was correct and is being corrected tonight at our school committee meeting. In short, the transportation subcommittee was a legally appointed subcommittee of the Wareham School Committee and followed all the procedural requirements of the open meeting law. The school committee maintains that there was no violation of the open meeting law. However, in the event that there is some confusion as to the membership of the transportation subcommittee, the chair of the school committee will state the names of the members of the subcommittee at the next meeting and will provide a list to the public. In item 21, the complaint alleges that the transportation subcommittee, safety subcommittee, curriculum subcommittee, community subcommittee, and budget subcommittee did not comply with the open meeting law. Attached, please find the relevant postings which demonstrate that all these subcommittees complied with all aspects of the open meeting law. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. Yours truly, Dr. Barry Rubenovich, Superintendent of Schools.
At this particular point in time, and I'd like to ask Mr. Swett if he can help me out. I'd like to, to my knowledge, state all of the members on the transportation subcommittee. And of course, it is Mr. Fontz, chairman, and yourself. I also recognize that Mrs. Brenda Ekstrom was appointed to the subcommittee by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to represent the selectmen. We had various members of the finance committee attend meetings, but I know that Mr. Paulson and I think Mrs. Bronk attended meetings. Mr. Rubenovich was part of the group, as was the town administrator, Mr. Andrews, and Mr. Snyder was appointed as a representative for the community at large. Did I leave anyone out?
Anna Miranda.
Anna Miranda was also part of that committee, which is the assist, the director of financial services. Did I leave anyone out?
I do not believe so.
Thank you. I just want to, for the record, again, reiterate that I always considered that committee to be an advisory arm of the Wareham School Committee. Okay, moving right along. Report of the superintendent.
Okay, thank you very much. The Make Peace Neighborhood Fund is currently taking applications between January 7th and March 14th for grants of up to $10,000 for education, environmental, community housing, historic preservation, and healthcare and agricultural projects. Since the grant's inception, the largest single recipient has been the Wareham Public Schools, which has received over $110,000 in grants to teachers for special enrichment programs and supplies. There was one year that the Mrs. Roteller and I put together a proposal for the summer reading program. They funded the entire summer reading program to the tune of about $9,500. So they've been very generous and would like to thank them. I believe there's something in your package that showed that. But one other thing that I would like to mention, and it has to do with Make Peace, that the, oh, actually, this is probably under when we asked to accept gifts, so we'll leave that for afterwards. So that is all from the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Student representative is not here today except, exception, acceptance of gifts. That's the next piece.
Ah, okay. I will recommend the following gifts, and if you'd like, we'll do one at a time.
Sure.
The first one is a light duty shredder from Judy Karen of Buzzards Bay to the Minnet Forest School Guidance Office.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 3-0-0. Dr. Rubenovich?
The acceptance of two inspirational CDs, the title of which is "No Arms, No Legs, No Worries," to the Wareham Cooperative Junior/Senior High School from Rachel Gillette, a member of the school committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 3-0-0.
And the last gift is a $20,000 gift from the Maurice and Ann Make Peace Foundation for the continuation of the Alternative Day Program at Wareham Cooperative Junior/Senior High School. And I believe this is the fourth year in a row that we've received a similar gift, and it helps pay for one of the, a portion of one of the salaries at that school.
entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 3-0-0. Is that it? All right, and we'll inform these donations?
Yes, Michelle will put together the-
Thank you very much. Very considerable on the Make Peace Foundation. Recommendations of the Policy Review Committee?
Sure.
Rhonda?
Thank you. The Policy Review Committee met on December 13th. There was one piece of old business, which was to discuss the policy that allows drivers to transport their children. It is a policy that, that has come up every single policy review, and every single time it, it does not go without much debate, much discussion, many challenges, because we all believe that it is very important to take a look at every aspect of what is going on on the buses, everything from mechanics all the way down to the driver and that, you know, whether they have everything they need to be able to safely transport children. So the policy came up again, and we asked for it to be tabled until Mr. Tetro had an opportunity to come and really give us his recommendation. He did come back and he said that he did, from his experience as well as research, that this does absolutely go on in other communities, that it is something that he's comfortable with, with the following stipulations. One, that is a privilege, and that he communicates that to the drivers, that there are, if there are any issues whatsoever, whether it is a complaint from a parent or any issues that he sees, that he'll take care of it swiftly. He wanted to tighten the policy down even further, and again, he stressed that he wanted this to continue because he did not want to put additional pressure on some of the drivers. And so the additions that we put into this policy were, one, that the child would need to be five years old or a student in the public school system. So if they were in pre-K, if they were in kindergarten, so that was one. The other one was that we wanted to revise the language when it talked about physical or emotional condition, and Lambros had some great comments during that meeting on what language should be added. And so we're, we've also changed the language to add, "Each child must be free from any physical or emotional condition that will prevent a driver from being able to perform his or her duties while working for Wareham Public Schools, or that would impair the safety and well-being of the occupants of the bus." So those were the two additions, as well as Mr. Tetro came with really what he wanted his own policy to be. So again, we debated, we went around and around, and finally agreed that this was the right thing to do going into the 2012 school system or its school year. And so we, we went for, we went for the recommendation. So it is the recommendation of the Policy Review Committee to continue with the policy of allowing drivers to transport their own children with the additions of some of the added language.
Language relative to physical or emotional-
Yep, or as well as that the child must be five-
Five years old or older.
Exactly.
Okay. Any discussion, Jeff?
But it's-
And this one will have to go around the table.
But it's not before us today because it's being reviewed by council? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're not voting on this today?
Correct.
Is that correct?
I just wanted to verify that.
And it has been sent to our attorney, and we're waiting for it to come back.
But as it stands today, we are in fact transporting, drivers are transporting their own children-
Because the current policy-
Under the old policy.
Exactly.
Well, the policy we're operating on.
Right, and the new policy, once it's approved, would go into this year. And there, right, or would it be 2012?
We said that it would take effect as of the beginning of next year. In other words, it wouldn't cause a driver to have to leave employment tomorrow because we passed the-
But just one thing, that, that this policy doesn't, even if it went in after we voted on it, it doesn't affect any drivers. So this is what is going on today. There is no child on there that is either under five years old or a member of the-
So that was my question. What, under this, under the current policy, how many children of drivers are being transported by their parents?
I think I- We asked that question.
There were a few. I can't remember the exact number.
I was going to say there's four or five.
Four or five. And when you referred to, he didn't want to create any, I think the word you used was pressure on drivers. I assume by that you mean he didn't want to cause a change in the status quo until the fall? Is that, is that a correct interpretation?
We all felt, yes. Even if we did change the policy to say, "No more," that we're no longer going to allow drivers to transport their own children, that we would have waited until the new school year. We did all feel, including Mr. Tetro, that could we lose bus drivers? Yes. But given enough time, that there could be other, there, there could be ways that we could keep bus drivers. So we were basically giving them enough time.
So there are four or five under the current policy, but under the proposed policy that is being reviewed by council, there would be zero?
No, there would still be four or five, because we're still-
Oh, I'm sorry. There's nobody under the age of five.
There's nobody under the age of five right now.
As you can look to believe.
I misinterpreted what you said. Okay, so the same situation would exist under the new policy as compared to the old policy, because the current situation in fact is, conforms with the new policy.
Exactly. And this is, and the policy wasn't written, his recommendation wasn't written, he didn't look around at his bus drivers and say, "Let me create a policy." No. This is, he came very prepared with other communities and what they're doing. And again, it was debated, there were two that voted against it.
I'm sorry, two what?
There were two members of the Policy Review Committee, and I don't mind saying, including myself, that, that voted against this policy because of perception and liability. And we just, I kept saying that over and over again, perception and liability. I have nothing against the, the drivers. I think that if I was a driver and I had a young child, I would want them to be on my bus route, but it was about perception and liability. Mr. Tetro came with a very valid argument on, many arguments on why to continue, and put forth a policy that he felt comfortable with. And so at the end of the day, the majority of the members of the Policy Review Committee agreed with it, and so it was a majority to recommend this to the school committee.
Well, may not be necessary to say this now, but I'll be voting against it. And I think there's a third element that is not being considered, which is, there's simply a natural conflict of interest. I don't know any, I think 99 out of 100 mothers presented with a choice between several children and their child, well-act in the best interest of their child, and we can't have that on one of our buses, so.
And Jeff, that, that was, that was the debate. That was exactly what went around and around. But, you know, we, we debated this, Dr. Rubenovich, you were there, we spent most of our, I mean, thank goodness, the other policies, there were minor changes to them because we spent the majority of our meeting debating this, and that's the reason why it's been debated-
And I won't waste any more time because it's going to come before us anyway.
It's going to come before us again.
Yes.
So we can vote on it at that particular time or make comment or try to convince those of us that are on the fence.
Fine, thank you.
Anything else?
No. Oh, well, the, the new business, so there were-
Staff ethics conflict, yeah.
Yep. So there were other policies that are before you for approval, the staff ethics, conflict of interest. You have it in front of you? Would anyone like a explanation?
No changes, right?
No, there was two changes. One is not in the notes, though. One was that we deleted the last sentence that talked about, Dr. Rubenovich, it said, I didn't bring my folder today.
Is this, is this what's in front of us, what was voted on at the committee?
Yes.
Yes, this is the, the policy with the change.
Right.
Okay, so you can't point out the change in this, though?
There was, in the last paragraph, there was a sentence that did speak to, that, and this is the one piece that's not in the notes. It spoke to promotions of an existing employee that we didn't feel that it was, I can't-
We deleted that in the, I believe, and Rhonda can correct me, but that majority of the people present felt that that was unfair for somebody that had been in employment for multiple years.
I'm going, I'm going to recommend that this not be voted tonight.
Okay.
And I don't think it's right that we, I, I don't think we should vote on any of these tonight, because I haven't got the full board here, and I just think that, you know, if we're, if it's going to come back to us anyways, but I just think that we need to have the report so we know where the changes are. Would that be appropriate? Would you guys be too upset with me if I recommended that?
Absolutely not.
Tell me, come to the-
And I don't think that it's, we'll have one more meeting before our next-
Do you want to table it until the next meeting?
No, I want to go through the rest of the recommendations, so we have some talking points.
But then I'll have to go through them again at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I know you will. I know.
But I have a question.
Yes.
On this particular policy. When I was reading it at home, the way I interpreted this, and I want to make sure I was correct in this interpretation. If there was an immediate family member, if two people who were connected as, by, by these definitions of immediate family, and one was working in the high school and the other was working in the middle school, that that would be a violation of this policy. And I didn't see why that should be the case. Am I interpreting that correctly, that those, you couldn't have someone in the middle school and someone in the high school from the, and both be a member of the same immediate I mean, I can see why you wouldn't want, you know, Mr. Palladino's son to be a teacher in the high school. You know, that's an obvious conflict of interest. But if, if his son or, or wife or whatever was a teacher in the middle school or elementary school, my, my experience in management says, that's fine. Because if you work your way up through the organizational chart, there's no conflict. So am I interpreting it correctly that that would not be acceptable the way that policy is being proposed?
We talked mostly about direct supervision.
Yeah, but it, it goes beyond that.
Yep. And Dr. Rubenovich, isn't this the state's policy? Because we, we came up with many different examples at the meeting.
No, this is not, this is not the state. We actually took-
No, this is the local policy.
We took from the Mass Association of School Committees. We took a-
Symbolically.
Boy, look- Boy, look plain language, and put it together. And I think the group felt that that immediate family, for somebody that had been employed for a long time, was not appropriate, and that's why it was struck. In fact, somebody even said it was probably illegal to say to somebody that they can't ever apply for-
No, Jeff is basically saying, does this prevent someone who is currently working in the high school, that their sister applies for a position in the middle school?
Actually, the specific sentence is even more precise, but it still applies. In order to avoid the appearance of any possible-
The little paragraph you want, Jeff?
I'm sorry, the last paragraph.
Okay, go ahead.
"In order to avoid the appearance of any possible conflict, it is the policy of the school committee that no employee be hired who is a member of the family of a school committee member or administrator in the school district." Which means that if they, if any member of an administrator, such as Mr. Palladino, wanted to work in any of the other schools, it seems to me, the correct reading of that language says that that would be precluded.
That is correct.
And I don't see why we should limit the pool of outstanding people arbitrarily.
I think I might have no problem with that, but.
But Rhonda, do you see my point, and was that the intent?
I do, but we talked about, yeah, mostly administrator, we talked more about Dr. Ravinevich, as well as his, his staff, not so much about the principals.
I understand.
But Jeff's reading is correct, because when it says administrator-
Literally interpreted, that's exactly what it says.
The definition of an administrator is anybody that has a principal's license, an assistant principal's license-
Pretty broad.
That can do, you know, observations and evaluations and-
Which is getting even more broad.
Yeah.
So then, would it be the recommendation to bring this back to the Policy Review Committee, talk about the word administrator, and see if another word could be inserted? Or could we make a recommendation here at the school committee level?
Perhaps, we can make a phone call to the Attorney General's office with this, and ask, you know, maybe even send this to them, and ask about that particular thing, and ask if the intent of the new legislation is that, if it's, if this is, you know, in the right vein, or is it not? You know, are we going beyond where we need to? And it would be interesting to have, you know, because they deal with these all the time, and, you know, give help. So I think that's what we need to do with this before we bring it back.
Okay.
Fine. So-
Your office will take that as a-
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And transportation, emergency, safety, and crisis response policy.
Both were, talked about the addition of a flip chart. And that is really just the only addition here. And the Policy Review Committee did approve that to move forward.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, like I said before, I mean, we can vote on this tonight, but I just think that where it's policy, we should have the full committee.
I think that's a good idea, I concur.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So would they save these for the next meeting?
Right.
Yes, okay. Okay.
So we have Mr. Palladino, I think.
Yep, request for student field trips, Scott?
So Mr. Palladino has saved one of his advisors a trip from, was she in Dartmouth that she lives? Oh.
Mr. Palladino, if you sit next to Mr. Swett, then you should be able to pick up on that microphone.
Actually, why don't you take my seat for the moment?
Okay.
For those who don't know, this is Principal Palladino of the high school. Thanks for coming outside, I know the conditions are terrible, but.
Thanks for having me.
All right.
The art department wanted to be here tonight to present a proposal for a trip to New York in April. They have a very busy itinerary for a one-day trip. They're gonna leave early in the morning. Their goal is to get down there as early as possible in the morning, hopefully avoid the traffic. And they're looking to get into two art museums, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and to see a Broadway show.
Wow.
All in one day. I saw the itinerary, it's an early start, and it's a late showing at home. So it's gonna be a packed day, they're going to try and make it as economical as possible. They're very excited, they're doing some fundraising, they've received some grants, and they're very excited about tying this into their curriculum, and I'm excited to endorse it as well.
Is there any idea how much it's gonna cost, Scott?
Um, they're, I'm just gonna estimate, but when I spoke with her, she's hoping to keep it in the forty to fifty dollar range. She does have, as I said, some grants that she did receive, and she's trying to keep that cost down as low as possible. But it's gonna be an awesome experience for our students, and we're excited about it.
Do you think students with any kind of a financial need might, might not be able to go to this?
No, we're gonna utilize the waiver system, similar to, as if it was an athletic user fee.
Good.
So it'll be the same waiver system, and we'll find some money.
But there are opportunities for fundraising.
There is an opportunity for fundraising, so if someone wanted a hustle, they could probably have a little pocket change after the fact, and have the whole trip paid for.
Very good. Any other questions?
Couple. Are they gonna continue to use the way they're getting down there, as the transportation and around New York City, or are they going to be accessing the subway system, do you know?
I believe that everything is very close proximity to Broadway, and I'm not sure on that, I'll have to get back to you on that. But I believe everything is very, within walking distance, is what I understand.
What day is April first, do you know? I know, I should've took a look at it.
I have it.
The reason why I ask is that-
I have it.
Because they are taking a bus, correct, they're utilizing the Amtrak?
Friday.
Thank you.
It is?
Thanks, Christian.
Okay.
Friday.
Four hours to the city is, I would just have them take a look at that timeline again. I mean, it takes four hours with no traffic whatsoever, and right when they're getting in there is rush hour traffic. I mean, they'll be stuck in the tunnel for an hour.
Yeah, I explained to her, she may need to move that time up a little bit. Having a brother that lives twenty minutes outside the city in Connecticut, four hours is a good clip just to get to his house, so I agree.
And then, the last thing is, I, whenever I see proposals like, I always wanna know what they're going to do with it. I know it's gonna be woven into their curriculum, but are they gonna be doing a presentation and an assembly? Or are they, I know that's probably a little bit much, but are they going to be doing any presentation, any reports, anything like that?
I believe it's more of a tie-in to what's going on in the class. I'm not sure if there'll be a report, but I believe it's more tying in, culminating units into the curriculum, and utilizing this as a way to show students there's more to art than just what happens in Room 256 and 260, that they can move on and use this as a stepping off point to a college career, and possibly eventually to an occupation.
And just by what you said, I think that that's why it's even a greater opportunity to maybe add something on to the curriculum or something about this. So then, not only are they just kinda weaving in the curriculum, they have them, they can walk away with, you know, whether it's a picture book, or a-
A portfolio entry.
A portfolio from it.
Right, definitely, part of the graduation requirement, so.
When is the absolute drop dead time that you need a decision from us?
She was hoping for tonight, because there is some booking that needs to occur, to make sure that they have the seats available, specifically transportation and obviously the Broadway show. I think the museums, there's a little more flex time that's available for those.
Well, I'm all for enrichment activities, and I think that this would be, to go to two art museums in New York City, and a play for a lot of our kids, it'd probably be the first time they've even done that. So it's an enrichment activity that's certainly, I think, worthwhile. I do hear a couple of areas of concern, one, well, one you addressed, that there would be no financial hardship, you'd figure out a way to do it. Secondly, Jeff had a question as to, what was it exactly already, I forgot.
You must've been reading my mind, I didn't say anything, but I do have some questions.
Oh, maybe you haven't said anything, and of course, Rhonda had one in terms of tying it into the curriculum and so forth. So I suppose we could give you a tentative approval tonight, if we wanted to, and then you'd get back to us with the answers to those questions.
Sure.
Jeff?
I love, as Coach says, I think these kind of enrichment activities are great. I'm glad to hear it's a Friday, because it would seem to me that some of these kids might-
They're really gonna be in good shape the next-
Yeah, the next day, they won't be much good in class. But I tend to look at things sort of on a risk reward basis. And so I called Mayor Menino's office and asked him if there was any art in Boston, and he assured me there was. Just joking, but obviously-
A very fine museum in Boston, more than one.
Yeah, exactly, so I have to ask the question. Has, had there already been field trips to Boston to see the Gardner Museum, and to see the wonderful museums that exist in Boston?
I know that this year, they had a chance to go to the Fine Arts, Museum of Fine Arts, and there was another glass museum that they went to earlier in the year. But for this group, they've never had the opportunity to really leave the state as far as for field trips.
Thank you.
Just, this is from previous experience. I recall walking around the middle school one day and going into a sixth grade classroom, where a particular teacher had been talking about immigration, and one of the students stood up and asked if they could go to Ellis Island. The teacher looked at me, I looked at the teacher, and said, "If you can raise the money, then I'll okay the trip." Well, they raised the money, and the teacher said to me, "If we're going, you're going as a chaperone." And we left here about 4:00 AM in the morning, drove down to New York, went to Ellis Island. I think we got there about eight. We did Ellis Island, we did Statue of Liberty, we had dinner. One of the patrons, somebody who owns a restaurant in Wareham at the time, came along and paid for lunch at the Carnegie Deli for all of the students and the chaperones. And then we came back to Wareham about eight o'clock in the evening, and we were exhausted, but it's a trip that those students will remember for the rest of their lives.
Yeah, Jeff, I do, I appreciate your comments, but-
But.
There are very few opportunities to break out of your comfort zone. I love the fact that as far as you can push it, push it. So if you came to me and said that the students want to go to Italy, then I would be even more in favor of that, if it could be paid for, if, you know, everything was in place. It's such a great opportunity for them to branch out as far as they can go, and see, because Boston, I know that it's still an hour away, but it's in our own backyard, and they could take their own opportunities and do that. This is an opportunity that they might not have, and if it's structured, if it's paid for, if we're not going to leave any student behind because they don't have the financial ability to do it, I do think, go further than New York, if you can.
And I think it's important, she, in her-
Not in one day.
In her club, there's a group of kids that haven't gone further away than Rhode Island, so they're very excited to even venture even further away, and that's a fact. There are a good percentage of students that have never been to New York, let alone New York City.
And Ms. Deon is an art teacher that does stretch the limits of our youngsters' imagination, very creative. She's done a lot with fabrics, with University of Rhode Island, and so, you know.
And of course, the family, they'd have their permission slips in, it's ultimately up to the parent whether or not they want the student to participate in this.
Glad it was strategically planned that way, now that I-
I don't know, ladies and gentlemen, would a conditional approval be in order?
I'd be happy to vote.
Conditionally, or given approval?
I've said my piece, I trust Scott, you know.
What?
Voter approval.
You wanna drive?
Then I'll entertain a motion, if anybody wants to make the appropriate motion.
Sure, I'll move approval, and then I just wanna say that if you need chaperones, I'd be happy to go.
There you go.
You're in.
All right.
I'll send her the email.
All right, great.
I have a motion, this is for full approval, not conditional, is that correct?
This is for full approval.
Jeff, we have a motion for full approval.
Would you like a second?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, three, zero, zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I'll only go if I wanna know about the portfolio that will-
You're tied into the curriculum.
Send me the email tied into the curriculum, the output.
Give them some worksheets.
Very good.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Dr. Ravinevich, I believe you're up. Would everyone like to take a seat outside?
Yeah, that would make life a little bit easier, so that we can use the screen.
Jeff, if I may, just as a member of the Budget Subcommittee, I wanna add on to what Dr. Sylvia said about, you know, braving the elements to be here today, so then we could do this presentation. I think that this was important for us to do, to be able to give the citizens of Wareham the opportunity to view this on our cable access.
And they're gonna show it over and over again.
Right, exactly, and that's what we heard tonight, that they're gonna show it over and over and over again. And to also encourage everyone that after they do see it and if they have questions, that there is a public hearing, or public presentation on the nineteenth, that has been stated, yep, here, in the middle school, here where we are today, in the middle school auditorium. And to come with your questions, we encourage them, the budget process is lengthy, we know that. I'm not gonna say tedious, but we've gone through these numbers over and over and over again, and so we encourage everyone to view this presentation, ask your questions. Please come in and have your questions be heard on the nineteenth, and hear from us directly.
I guess I do wanna add one more thing in light of those very appropriate comments, and that is, I think it's really important that when citizens watch this presentation, they realize that this is not what this is not. Despite the size of the numbers that you're going to see, this is not a question of how much money the town will spend in total. I don't think there's any member of this committee, and I hesitate to speak for strong-minded people, but I think it's fair to say, there's no member of this committee, and I'm pretty sure there's no member of the FinCom or the Board of Selectmen, who will be proposing an operational override to support any aspect of the town or the school's budget. So what you're, what you'll be asked to ultimately decide at town meeting with the facts as presented by Dr. Ravinevich is, is how we spend the finite amount of money that we have. And that's critical, so despite the size of these numbers, it's still a function of how we spend it, not how much we spend in total.
Good, all right, let's adjourn to the meeting out of the auditorium, and then we'll come back up for discussion.
This is the budget timeline, and it starts very early. Even though up on the screen it says that it started in December, it really starts in November at the individual building level, where principals are talking to department heads, to teachers, about what they feel they need within their school buildings. On December seventh and tenth, the principals, the directors, come to my office and present what they feel they need. The instructions that they received back in November was, "Build a level service budget, and add only what we are sure we need to close the achievement gap." That's what they were instructed. On January fifth, we did an all-day event where the Budget Subcommittee, two members of the school board, we had two members of the FinCom, and all of the directors sat through a full day where all the principals came forward saying, telling us something about their buildings, and the number of staff that they're in charge of, and why they need what they've asked for. Tonight is the first time that the entire school board, and for the camera, the budget in its entirety is seen. And in this same auditorium on the nineteenth, we will have a public hearing, and then we will listen to all of that feedback, and we will come back on the twenty-sixth, where we will ask the school board to take a vote on the budget. And by February first, the town administrator will have a memorandum from us. Okay, what am I gonna try to communicate tonight? Okay, what am I going to try to communicate tonight? The money we have requested is needed to close the achievement gap between Wareham's children and the state's average. Wareham has been funded below the state average spending for many years, and we will the dollars go. So there's actually three parts to the presentation. The chart in front of you, the top two lines, the purple line is the state of Massachusetts and all of the children, and state average in achievement for English Language Arts. And in 2010, the CPI was 86.9, Wareham is 84.5. Now, one can look at that and say, "Well, it's only 2.5 below in the average." But the gap between the achievement has stayed consistent from 2005. And if we had it from the beginning of the MCAS, you would see that, yes, we have grown in achievement, but the gap has remained. Mathematics, the red line is the state average. The golden rod, or yellow, is Wareham. We have 5.4% difference, or CPI points difference, between Wareham and the state. We've increased, and in fact, we've narrowed the gap, but the gap remains. Now, have we tried to do new programs? Yes, last year we brought in a brand-new math curriculum, starting down at the elementary grade 1 through 5. Next year, we hope that that program will go into grade 6. We bought over $100,000 worth of books for that program, and the only reason we were able to afford it and were able to put it in is because of federal stimulus money. So if you can kind of keep that in mind, that is the achievement gap. How to eliminate the achievement gap? I am proposing some new programs. One of them is called RTI, which is called Response to Intervention. Why haven't we put it in fully before? Because it's costly. You need interventionists, people, extra teachers, to be in the classroom so when a student has an issue with a concept, there is someone there to remediate them and to give them a second dose of instruction, so to speak. Also implementing an enhanced supervision and instructional leadership program. We have, over the last year and a half, been meeting in a combined labor management committee, coming up with a different evaluation system. One where we have supervisors that are, have a responsibility for approximately 10 people that they will monitor on a regular basis, be in classrooms, be able to work with our staff to help them do the best job that they can. At Wareham High School, there is going to be a mass core curriculum. That is something that the federal government has passed, the state of Massachusetts has passed, and now where most of our children had three years of mathematics in high school, they now have to have four years of math. Where they had two years of a lab science, they have to have three years of a lab science. And there are specific other courses that they have to take another eight credits or eight courses in that they prescribe. What that means is we have to have additional staff. Spending alone, because, you know, I've heard it, you've heard it, spending alone isn't going to decrease that achievement gap. But when we look at the gap in spending, and the fact that it mirrors the gap in achievement, what it says to me is that we can't keep doing the same things we have been doing, because if we do, we're going to get the same results. All right, Wareham versus the state net school spending. We have a virus. The reason this starts in 1993, that is the beginning of educational reform in Massachusetts. That's when it was passed. We have three columns, Wareham, the state, and the difference. So, starting in 94, the state came up with a number that was the minimum amount that it was legal to spend on education. Wareham actually spent 2.7% less than that, and the state spent 2.6 above. And that state, that's the average spending. If you took every single community and the amount of money that they spent, that's the percent over minimum net. The following year, we're at 3, they're at 2.8. Then we look at 97 as where we have a period of time where things really got bad, and we're all in the negative and they're in the positive. And it just continues like that until we get to 200, or, yeah, 2007. We go 1% above minimum net spending. The state is at 13% above. '08, 1.9, the state is at 14.3. '09, we have 3.14, Wareham, 16.2 for the state. And in '10, we spent 2% above minimum net, the state is at 14.6. And the last column shows the difference between those numbers. So if we take the red line as the state, and that is the percent above minimum net spending, and then if we look at the blue and we see Wareham, you can see the gap between what is spent as the state average spending above minimum net and what Wareham has spent above the minimum net. Notice the gap here, and notice the gap in achievement. If Wareham spent at the state average above minimum net spending in fiscal 2010, that would have been worth $2,787,000 more than what we had to spend, just to be at the state And in fact, from '03 to '10, every year would have been more than $2 million, every Now I'll try to explain where the dollars that we're asking for are planned to go at this particular time. I believe I passed out to you, there is a one-page document that is called Wareham School Department FY12 Budget. It's a one-page that is the full budget, and along the side, you'll see the categories, the major category areas that I believe you're going to see in the next slide. Yes. So, and these are the areas that are part, that make up net school spending. We have district leadership and administration, instructional services, student services, operations and maintenance, insurance and retirement, leases, and payments to other districts. Now, this is a very, it's one page, there's a lot of numbers on it, but the two large areas of increase are, in instructional services, $1,663,430, and payments to other districts, Those large areas are shown on the pie chart. Instructional services, 77% to the budget. If you then take in the out-of-district placements, the $1,905,000, or 7%, now you have instructional services plus out-of-district go to make up 84% of the budget. If we then add in operations and maintenance to keep the buildings running and to heat them and to make sure we have light and water and so forth, we add another 10%, and now we're at 94% of the budget. Student services is also part of special education, but it covers more than that, and also covers nursing and so forth, other health-related things, which is 2% of the budget. We have leases, which are 1%, which is actually all for copier leases, which run in all of So again, that's the one page done into a pie chart. Why the large increase to this year's budget? Loss of federal stimulus money. Well, the question could be asked, "Why did you use the stimulus money?" Well, the federal government said that foundation budget, which was at a level, and the amount of funding that we received was below that by a certain amount of money. So the federal government made up the difference between the minimum net spending and foundation by giving the school system, in fact, one grant. It's in three separate pockets. You'll hear me say stimulus money, you'll hear it called ARRA. It's all the same, except it's in three pockets. We received from the state something called SFSF, which was the stimulus funding. We received IDEA, which was specifically for special education, ARRA, and we received Title I, ARRA, for additional Title I programs. And the new positions are the positions that we were able to retain so that we didn't have to lay people off. Now with that money gone, in the FY12 budget, that's $741,000 worth of positions, that you will not find in the general budget from '11 because they were paid for by federal grant money. The program of having these additional supervisors to work in our schools with our teachers as part of the evaluation and observation is $267,000. Contractual obligations. And I have a slide to show you that when we start our teachers, they start below any of the other areas around us, and they start about 37.5. Vaughan, for instance, starts at 42. So for them to go from step one, their first year of teaching, to step two, to step three, each year there's a built-in increase that has to come into the budget. That and a 1% raise that was part of the negotiated settlement comes out to that $517,000. Increase in textbooks, educational material, $154,000, and special ed tuitions to private going up, $368,000. Private school tuitions, it's one of the only areas that is not regulated. They have to go to the state for their increases, and every year, they average about a 7% increase. So if the amount of money you have doesn't go up that much, then the portion that's eaten up by that line item goes up because of those increases to educate, and it is by team process and legally, we have to spend the money there. We don't have a choice. Okay. The first, on your one page where it says district leadership and administration, these are the accounts, and the paperwork that I gave you shows a four-digit number, and that's where you'll find the 1110, 1430, 1210, 1410, and 1450. That's what makes up the 1,000 accounts or administration, and that's how we come up The 2,000 is the instructional services, and is the largest part of the budget. That's that 77% that I showed you. And again, we have the four digits down the left, what the account stands for, and then we have what was in '11, what's in '12, what the difference is, and looking for large differences, perhaps the 2021-10 curriculum office. As part of a plan that we had or give to the state saying that we are going to help schools that are in need of improvement, we had to come up with a way of pre and post testing students. So the testing materials that are needed makes up approximately this $29,000, as well as some additional instructional materials. But it is about the assessment there. We have a half of a tech parrot that was added at the high school. Classroom teachers, again, that shows any of the changes, that's the money from the grants that have gone away, as well as any increases make up the $917,000, and the instructional leaders that we talked about under supervision, the $266,775. All right, here's a slide that shows bachelor's step one, beginning, somebody with just a bachelor's degree and no teaching experience coming into the school system. Wareham, this year is at $37,466, and Vaughan, Carver, Marion, Middleborough. Masters, 30, top step, that means they've been in the, they have 30 credits beyond their master's degree, and they have 25 years of experience. They get to that line. So we are much more in line with people at the end of the line than we are at the beginning. But since 50% of our staff now are in their first 11 years because we've had a lot of retirements, that's why that line item continues to increase yearly. Here's a chart just to show that, same, and it shows both lines. You can see where Wareham is, below the other districts in blue, bachelor's step one, kind of right with everybody, and masters 30, above some, some still above us. Continuing with the instruction line, 2,000, the one that stands out, we have paraprofessionals, contractual obligations, we have a new position that we've added for special ed autism spectrum disorder class here at the middle school, as well as we've- as well as we've had some of the grant reductions that used to pay for part of those paraprofessionals that now have to be put into the LEA budget, and that's why the large increase in that line item. Continuing, we have textbooks, large increase, and really, the other one then becomes hide wear and tech supplies, fifty-four thousand, and that is for some changes of computers and upgrading some classroom technology throughout the district. Three thousand account, the attendance, system medical, those are the nurses' salaries, athletics, other student activities. You can see this entire three thousand accounts only went up seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine, or one point two-one percent. Custodial services have gone up. The building maintenance has gone up because of the age of our buildings. The computer networking has gone up. And I'm not sure, let's see, point-two-five energy manager, that was not in the budget. Additional repair due to age of buildings and system software solutions that were previously paid for by grants. Retirement and student insurance. The insurance line, both of them have not gone up, they're both exactly the same as they have been in the past. Leases, there is a small increase. And tuitions. This line is not all special education. The first line item, ninety-one-hundred, has to do with Bristol Agricultural. If a student wants a program in Animal Husbandry, and it's not offered at Upper Cape or at Wareham High School, then we need to pay the tuition of about eighteen thousand dollars a year out of our net school spending for that student to go there. We currently, to be honest, I'm not even sure if that hundred and sixty-two thousand is going to be enough, but with the eighth graders who are asking to go there in ninth grade, but that's, it's difficult to know if everybody that applies gets in because there is an application process and it's up to the agricultural school whether they accept students that apply. So that was the best guesstimate that we had at that particular time. The other two are special ed costs, either private special ed day schools or collaborative Hopefully, there'll be another slide at the end that will show the total of that spending for net school spending. This on non-net school spending, it shows our transportation line, looking to increase by a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, or an eight-point-five percent. And so the entire non-net school spending, we're looking for only a twenty-two thousand dollar increase, or a one-point-five. We've taken the replacement of motor vehicles out of that, and so last year we received one million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine fifteen. This year, we're asking for one million, four hundred and ninety thousand, two sixty-eight. And the difference in that one-sixteen is we're actually using expenditures from the budget rather than projected budgeted numbers. The non-net school spending numbers over the last six years, if you take the decreases, the zeros, and then the small increase that we're asking for this year, the average percent increase over six years is zero. So the budget as it is from all of the requests of our managers, and for net school spending, it's twenty-seven million, ninety-one thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, or an increase of two million, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars, or eight-point-one percent over last year. Non-net, as I just said, twenty-two thousand, three fifty-three, larger, one-point-five. Altogether, when you add up the two numbers, both the net and the non-net, we're asking for twenty-eight million, five eighty-one, six eighty-one, which is a seven-point-eight Basically, that's just what we said. This budget represents the requests of the principals and directors of the Wareham Public Schools, and the comparison between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve is made more difficult because of the additional edgy jobs money that created new positions, as well as the loss of the stimulus money known as ARA. And to, I want to leave you with, to decrease the achievement gap, we also need to decrease the spending gap.
Are you going to turn that off?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
Much better.
Well, I think that I'm going to, I'm going to go first because I know that you've been working with the budget subcommittee. I'm going to make some, I'm going to have some questions, Dr. Rubenovich, and I, some comments, so bear with me. Reference page of our handouts, I referenced page two, which is the bottom chart, which indicated the gap between state average and Wareham Public Schools. As you know, I have been talking about meeting state average for a number of years now, and that should be something that we should aspire to. And when we talk about state average, we're talking about wealthy communities opposed to not-so-wealthy communities, and it really doesn't matter where they get their funding, it's where they spend their money in education. So, so the average takes into consideration those very wealthy affluent communities and those that are not. So we, again, should be, at least be able to meet state average in these things. The thing that kind of bothers me is, we seem to be pretty consistent in math, low. But the thing that bothers me is I see a downward trend in English and Language Arts. And I know that we, we're, this budget is proposing additional spending in textbooks and resources and mathematics. So is it going to be a classic case of putting our resources in one area that we are deficient and watching the other area slide? Or do you think that our slide in two thousand and ten in English and Language Arts for the district is an aberration?
If I may answer the question.
Yes, it's directed towards you.
You're well aware, one of the new programs, so to speak, or one of the steps that we took last year to help, is that at the elementary school, we went to two-person teams in grade four and five. And as you're well aware, before last year, the fourth-grade teacher and the fifth-grade teacher had to teach and prepare six different curriculums. And so we were asking them to focus on math, we were asking to focus on English Language Arts. And human nature being what it is, when a lot of pressure went on to focus in one area, something else, our eyes kind of fell off of it. Now, we have one person who does English Language Arts and Humanities, and one who does math and science. So all the new training and the new textbook about math is going to one instructor while we continue to work with our English Language Arts, with Portfolio, six-plus-one writing that we've put in. And so now it's a little more even, they're both getting the attention, and I believe that that is an aberration. But as you're well aware, when you put in a new program, it sometimes takes a year or two until you see the results.
Okay. Well, it's just a concern of mine, and I'm sure that that concern may be echoed at some point down the road when we have our meeting. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about the federal stimulus package and whether or not we should have taken advantage of it or not. You know, one of the things that I think that we should not lose sight of, and I know that you and I privately have talked about it, and there's been some discussion at the school committee level, is the fact that one of the main reasons why the edgy jobs and federal stimulus money was put out there was because there was a recognition, especially here in Wareham over the last number of years, that we've had to lay off people. Because the, the amount of spending and the huge gap between state average and spending and what we spend here in Wareham, in many cases, wasn't even enough to, to even consider the kind of personnel that we needed, both in the classroom and, and support personnel. And so there has been layoffs, or there, I can't say layoffs, there has been some layoffs, but also positions through attrition that have not been, not been rehired or not been filled. And the one that comes to my mind most definitely, and I think it plays into two aspects of school life, is the fact that for years, we went without a guidance head at the high school. But here we are in the middle of our accreditation process, we're going to have the New England Association of Secondary Schools come in and accredit us, and thank God, with the edgy jobs money, we now have a director of guidance or a department heading guidance, you know, on staff. And we've got additional support at the elementary level in terms of class size. So I, I think that one of the rationales for the federal money to begin with, and us utilizing that federal money, is to fill the voids that were created through the fact that we were, for the greatest part of since ed reform, not funded at minimum levels. So I, I think we can't lose sight of, sight of that. And, you know, I think that when we make our presentation, that that's, that's got to be in the forefront, that we have had losses in personnel, profound losses in personnel. So...
Dr. Sylvia, on that, if I may.
Yeah.
When they, two years ago, and we have the ARA money coming, they looked at where the community was as far as minimum net spending, they looked at where the foundation budget was, and there was a gap there of six hundred and seventy-two thousand. Now, even with that said, foundation budget has not, the formula for it hasn't changed in ten years. So the percent or the amount of dollars that they thought were allowed, for instance, for health insurance, has not kept up. We've had double-digit increases in health insurance and what it costs, but yet the foundation budget has not been changed in the last ten years. So I do not believe that foundation budget is adequate, first of all. However, the state used the formula to say, all right, Wareham, you're below the foundation by six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and that's how we got that stimulus money, where some other communities that were at or above didn't get that. It was to just bring us up. And knowing that we were going to be looking at a funding cliff, we didn't spend all the money in one year, we split the money over two years, actually, we were hoping that we're going to be able to do it for three, but they did not allow us to. We did it over two, we made the new positions where we felt we needed it, we lowered class size at the elementary level, and we've been able to keep it for two years, and now with edgy jobs, we've been able to keep it to the third. Unfortunately, we've come to the end of the road, and we've hit the funding cliff, and that's what that seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars is about.
Right. But, you know, there was the intent of that grant, and a grant that we utilized very appropriately, in my opinion, but it's going to be very difficult for me to approve any budget that, that defies the intent of the federal law, which was to provide employment for these people, and to either bring them back or to provide opportunities for, for gainful employment, but more importantly, to fill the voids that were created because of budget deficits in the past. So just to say, well, somebody got hired on edgy jobs, we just lay them off or fire them, I'm not, I can't, I can't support that philosophy. And I know it's not your philosophy, but I, I know that it's going to be discussed and now, I just wanted to give you my, my input on that.
Just to go along that piece, as part of the budget subcommittee that I'm part of, and Dr. Rubenovich allowed us to come in this year and, and be part of each one of the pre-meetings with each one of the principals, that question was asked many times around programs and teachers and what's working and what's not. And what we heard over and over again from each one of the principals, we've been hearing it from the administration, but from the principals directly, was that if there's a program, or if there is something that is going on today that is not working, then it's cut. It is cut immediately. But the increases this year, and the issue that we're having with the stimulus money no longer being there, is that these programs are working, and that from the budget subcommittee really taking a look at what, what is basically needed to close that achievement gap. If these programs are working, have the data to prove it, we need to do whatever we can to keep those programs in place and give them their due time to start, not even start, but continue to increase closing the achievement gap.
Time is, that's key, time is, time is key.
It's just important to say that the principals are echoing that, that they are being very...
Another question, Dr. Rubenovich, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I've got a couple more. Why did, on page eight of your handout, the chart that has a comparison of salary schedules, could you tell me why you chose those towns? Are those towns significant for any reason?
Because they're around us.
Okay, all right.
I mean, that, I just, you know...
You could get your hand from that information.
Yes. Well, they were the ones that were closest to Wareham.
Okay.
And, you know, a lot of them are in our, I believe, our league as well.
Mm-hmm.
Self-coast conference.
And the other, the other question that I have is one of the largest increases in instruction is in textbooks, even though, in my opinion, two hundred and one thousand dollars of textbooks is not all that much in the system our size. Could you tell me, specific, not specifically, but generally, what that increased, why that increased? Fifty-nine percent?
Which number, which four-digit number are you talking about?
Twenty-four-ten, textbooks. Is there, I know you, you said something about a math series, or...
Actually, the, thank you. What it has to do with, when we bought the new math series, this is not really about the textbooks themselves, it's about instructional material. They're our consumables. We used to call them workbooks that children write in. And for many years, we couldn't afford these and would be copying and copying. So the idea is to give them to the students, they can bring home, write in them, and that's what that increase is about, both in mathematics and in science.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. And in terms of page eleven of your handout, you've got building maintenance is an increase of nineteen-point-four-eight percent, and this is just a comment that even at one hundred and sixty-seven thousand for building maintenance, with the age of our buildings, I, I find it amazing that we could even do it for anywhere close to that. So that's just my comments, it's not a whole lot of money.
Part of that, the reason it didn't go up more, is that we self-insured with our HVAC system, and it's yet, you know, we'll have to wait... and it's yet, you know, we'll have to wait through the end of the year to see if that was the wise choice or not. But it's something I worth, worth trying.
And on page twelve, you've got almost two million dollars in tuitions, placement tuitions. Is there any idea, ballpark, I'm not going to hold you to the specific number, about how many students we're talking about?
Approximately thirty.
Thirty.
One of the special needs students, from the time they're three years old, turning three, need to have the services that they require. And for very young children, we have a place, I'm not sure if they're in Dartmouth or not, but tuition is about forty-six, forty-seven thousand dollars per child. I believe we send ten children to that particular facility.
And then, on page fourteen, on your comments, it was a comparative of two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. You make the comment about the edu jobs money. Would we have been, could we have carried over more money had we not? This is just, this is just a question, this is not a comment. Could we have carried over more money had we not shared the edu jobs money to help defray two thousand and twelve?
If, yes, the answer is yes. We could have carried over more money if we hadn't had that reduction in our budget, that we had a backfill.
And then the increase, the total increase on the budget is eight point one percent. Just for the record, just for your information, almost on a yearly basis, Volk comes in with about five percent increase yearly. So, we're certainly in line with them. Rhonda?
I've asked so many questions that I'm sort of, over the past two months.
Well, maybe if you've got something tonight that's pertinent, fine, if not, we'll just go to Joe.
Or is there something that's missing from this?
I think, you know, you and I have talked about this before, just around the stimulus money and additional detail around that. But you and I have already discussed that, and so, preparing for the nineteenth, I think, again, I just want us to be a little bit more transparent. I know that there's transparency, you know, within the administration, but, you know, continuing to educate folks on the, the grants that we receive. Some of them were required to take and spend, some are competitive grants, and some are, there's a requirement that it is around programs and teachers, some a little bit more flexible. So, just being able to provide as much detail around that as possible. So then, the community does understand the need for schools across the state to use those funds. And, you know, I, I do know that, you know, we are, we're in hardship right now, and it, it's being taken away. But that, that what it was spent on was to decrease the, the achievement gap, so.
And if I may, on, on that comment for a second. When you look at the per pupil spending, if you go onto the Department of Education website and you go under finances, and then you go and look under per pupil spending, you'll find that I believe last year, the last number that's there was two oh nine. I asked when ten would be there, and they said probably by the end of the month. But oh nine, we spent eleven thousand five hundred per student with all of the grant money. Because that spending includes all grant money. Again, the state average is thirteen-five, two thousand dollars less per pupil spending. We spend two thousand dollars less per pupil, including all of the grant money that we get.
Do you know if the state average includes grants money?
Yes, that, that thirteen-five does, yes.
Does, yes. Anything else, Rhonda? Joe?
Well, like Rhonda, I've been involved in this process now since, I guess, certainly early December, and it feels like before that. I want everybody to know that the Budget Subcommittee will be meeting after the, the public hearing and deciding at that point what recommendations we will make to the full school committee with respect to this budget. The, the good news about this budget process compared to what I thought it would be just a few months ago is that the state is running about a three-quarters of a billion dollars ahead of their initial projections with respect to their own revenue. That means that we can expect that the very conservative initial projections that we heard about Chapter Seventy and perhaps even General Lottery Aid were excessively conservative, and we, they may be coming through with a small increase or at least level funding, including the impact of the edu jobs SF, which was about eight hundred plus thousand dollars. So if they, if they just level funded us, it would be a, a major improvement over the assumptions that we were forced to make as a town only a short time ago. I, I don't so much have questions because I've had lots of opportunities to ask them. But I think it's, I think it's important to know that I personally would not be supporting this budget, either in this current amount or perhaps in a reduced amount, but hopefully not substantially less. If I didn't see some changes being recommended that I feel have a significant chance to, in fact, increase student achievement. I think the RTI program, the Response to Intervention, which, it's my understanding will be primarily in the elementary schools.
That is correct.
That's correct. Is a major step forward because it has the huge advantage of, of getting to, intervening with a child long before they are feeling frustrated and feeling like they're years and are already thinking about why I'm here. And so I think that's critically important that we do that before parents out of desperation feel that they have to try and use these special education processes in order for the children to be successful. Obviously, in some cases, that's necessary and appropriate. But I think Response to Intervention has a record over the past ten years throughout the country of, of being able to do better things for children at a much earlier age. The other, in my mind, equally critical thing about this budget is there is an increased emphasis on instructional leadership and supervision of, of the staff. We cannot hope to change what happens in the classroom if our teachers aren't better supported, held more accountable for what actually happens in that classroom. If that happens, and we're also intervening, I see that as, as teacher-centered, and I see RTI as student-centered. If we do both of those things, then I think we can have some confidence that that gap that we all care about with respect to the state average, and even that is a, is an arbitrary number. We just want our kids to, to be optimally successful. Maybe have some reason to be optimistic that we're going to get better results. And the final thing I would say is, I think I've been doing budgets all my life, most of them not for school committees, but, but all, all around how to allocate the spending. I am incredibly confident that unlike in some for-profit corporations, we don't have, we don't have principals and department directors sitting out there thinking about how they can lavishly spend on themselves and think of ways to pad their budgets so that they can have a great time in their executive suites. It just doesn't happen. This is all about getting enough money to do the best that they can for children with the programs that they've got. And so, that, that makes me really uncomfortable with this process because I'm sure that every dime that's being requested would be put to good use. But unfortunately, I'm equally sure that the town probably can't afford all of that. So it's a, it's a conundrum. And I hope that the budget hearing that takes place next week with the FinCom and the Board of Selectment is a, is a healthy debate about priorities, it's constructive, it's thoughtful, because I think it's going to take all of that and more in order to come up with the right, right number to recommend to the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swett. Again, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the process because I know it's, it gets tedious, so, again, thank you to all. Is there any other business at this time?
I have one announcement.
Okay.
I don't know if you ever see. Thank you, yes, if this was live. But we did send a global connect home to say, ignore Channel Seven, there will be schooling Wareham tomorrow. But my second announcement is the CARE program. This is a program that has been supported by a Century Twenty-One federal grant, and it has been in existence probably about ten years. Started here at the middle school, it also is for elementary school. And they're having the end of the first term presentation, basically, to show some of the things that some of the students have done. It starts five-thirty here at the middle school lobby, from five-thirty to six-fifteen, where they'll have the garden club, will show some, I, I don't know how this fits, but the garden club is going to show homemade cranberry sauce, cranberry chutney, and cranberry pizza. I know how cranberries Wareham fit, but I don't know how garden club and cranberries, but.
Cranberry pizza.
And then the woodshop and media tech will also have exhibits to show. At six-fifteen in the auditorium, there's going to be a robotics demonstration. And at seven o'clock, there is a dramatic presentation, General Valley Hospital, a one-act soap opera parody. So, the students have been working on this all year. We have elementary and middle school students. And if you have an opportunity to come by, it should be a good take.
What's the date?
The date, thank you, is January twenty-fifth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Wareham Middle School. January twenty-fifth, is that, when do we meet next? No, we meet the twenty-sixth.
That must be a Tuesday.
So it's Tuesday.
Right.
And we also have been invited to, where do we get tickets for that, from you?
Oh, yes, I have the tickets.
Martin Luther King?
Yes, tonight, I have them tonight if you would like.
I'll get one tomorrow.
So, the Martin Luther King Breakfast
I'll push away from you tomorrow.
is the seventeenth Monday, breakfast is served at nine AM. It's being catered by Mill Pond Diner. And this is the Boys and Girls Club.
What time again?
Nine AM. The Boys and Girls Club are the primary motivator of this event. And the planning committee has some clergy, the YMCA, Makepeace Association, and Boys and Girls Club and the school system. I'm sure I forgot somebody, but the get-together, we've been, this is the third annual. And this year, the guest speaker.
Dr. Vanessa Brito.
Is Dr. Vanessa Brito, who is a Wareham High School graduate. And this is the third year, last year, Dr. Moller Farrier came and did a luncheon presentation. And the year before that, it was Rita Roach, who's an attorney. All three of them are Wareham High School graduates from this community, and they've done a nice job. So, as part of the ceremony, each one of the principals has designated a student to be recognized for their achievements, kind of following the principles of Dr. Martin Luther King about hard work, about perseverance, about nonviolence. And so it should be a good time. And the high school is helping us by having the prayer club is doing the invocation. And the, the steppers are some entertainment.
Excellent, excellent. I'll take a ticket. Rhonda?
Just one thing, going back to the budget just for a second. Is there any way that the presentation that you did tonight could be available online somewhere if people wanted to print it out?
Absolutely. So if people go to the super, the website of Wareham Public Schools, go to the superintendent's section, and then we will have it listed as a, they can click on it, and the presentation will be there.
Any other business? I want to take a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Please drive safely, everyone.